What happened?
I remember it was quick. They had five properties go over and pretty much extend going there, doing something to it. Fourth one, they got to do assessment on for see what the cost of. Which is the one. House down from me on David Street there, that whole Beckley's old meat market.
Oh, yeah.
Apparently Tom's not going to be tonight. So I don't have an agenda for him.
Really?
Yeah, or they get kicked back.
Yeah, he's he's sending us back for me. Something has to happen. Hopefully he's okay.
I got a check from the Veterans Affairs.
Oh, yeah? Everick, tip one, they come up and ask me, I'm like. There is nothing I can do about it.
No, that was the final one, I hate to say that.
I remember you asking that, yeah. I remember them asking that. I remember somebody saying they get all the time, but that's all I know.
I think Matt came, because I did see him with the Charger out on Saturday morning.
They worried about leaving their doctor's or Sunday, Saturday night.
Dean had called me at town hall and asked, and I said, just call, call Tom, because you guys already discussed that he would make sure someone was there.
Yeah.
He may already have something set up, so just give him a call. Well, I don't want to bother him. Well, you're gonna have to.
If you want an answer, you have to ask.
Because I hate being, oh, I don't know. Okay. Well, we are live on the camera and I'm ready whenever you guys are. I know I'm a minute early, but.
So I won't get in either.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Just a little jumpy.
Which I don't have to. Yeah.
Is she coming?
I hope so. I should say I'm like, but. Seven bell.
Seven.
Okay.
I get what you're saying now.
We gotta do a public hearing, what do you want to do first?
Um, we can do that first and then do the public.
Yeah, we're going to. Oh, okay. All right, well, we'll go up here, Whitley Stan, face the flag and say, pledge allegiance to the. Can I just hum along?
Yeah, do it.
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amy, I've had several discussions last week of religion or young people about that pledge, about call this a democracy. We're doing, no, we're not, we are a republic and we seem to get it.
I always have trouble with under God, because the military took the under God part out. So for years in the military, when we said it, we didn't say the under God. So every time you go to the under God app.
Well, when I was a little kid, second, third grade, and that wasn't even part of the pledge. That didn't come until like fifty-four, fifty-five.
Trump will fix that. You're talking about we need more religion today.
I said, always will be, always will be a country under God, yeah.
Yeah, but like I said, the military took all that out, so I don't have to have Tom put it back in.
Alrighty. We are missing our attorney, Lindsay, here for the night. Our town marshal, Tom Heflin, I think is going to be absent tonight. So, but I'm good, your whole board members are all present. And Ripley, your manager is here, and along with Melanie, our treasurer. Okay, the public hearing for a budget for twenty-two six.
So we're opening the public hearing?
Yeah, it's supposed to.
Okay. It's pretty cut and dry. Just when I spoke with Judy, she said, since we've had a lot of changes to taxes in the United States. So she said, just try to be careful with spending. So, I mean, our budget's pretty much the same as last year. But I wouldn't recommend, I mean, I, I don't want to say this, but I wouldn't recommend doing salary increases this year. That's the only thing with the budget. I'd say leave the salaries where they're at. I mean, of course, I would love to give everybody an increase, but I figure we'll play it by here, since everything's kind of up in the air still. And then we can wait until next year and then maybe.
We're not sure what the stage coming down with.
Nobody knows.
So she, yeah, she said, just be careful, tread lightly, try not to do anything too crazy.
We can always make it if things work our way down the road.
Right, right, well, I figured that would be.
Yeah.
But that's about the only thing different, because usually I'm like, well, are you guys thinking about salary increases? But I, I wouldn't recommend it this year.
I did notice you haven't included that. I was curious about that.
But it's pretty cut and dry. I mean, we just have the budget form one, it goes and breaks all of the different funds down that are on notice to taxpayers. And this is just what we post in the window and I posted at the post office as well. And it just has our adoption and public meetings on it. Form two, miscellaneous revenues, Judy helps me with these, because I still don't know where they pull the revenue numbers from. I'm sure there's a logic behind it, but I'm still learning with that. But not, not too much changed with any of that.
Open for any discussion, questions, comments? The motion to approve the budget as it has been stated.
I'll make the motion to approve the budget.
Motion, any second please?
All second.
Any second please? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? So passed, okay.
And then at next month, or next meeting, will be the adoption hearing. So then I'll actually slide everything over so it'll all be confirmed and I'll get it submitted to the state.
Now, does anybody have a chance to look at the minutes from last month? And if so, any changes or zip calculations or questions you have to almost? I'm making a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve the minutes, I, second please?
I'll second.
These seconds, all in favor, say aye. I don't hear much from you today. Okay. All right, employee reports, well, it's, our town marshal's not here, I don't know if we've got a written report from him.
I got nothing, he told you, I didn't know.
Okay, he just notified me he wouldn't be here tonight, but, okay, so.
So he'll give his report at the next month's meeting.
Okay. Mr. Lee, then, you are up, sir.
All right. If you look at, when I say replace transmitter, transmitter is basically, I got a call that water tower's overflowing one day. And it's actually kind of like a pressure switch on a well. It senses the level of the water and it was just shorted out. So it, it was showing that, you know, our water level was zero, we were at twenty-five feet. So we just ran it manually for a couple of days and then I got one.
Is water actually coming out of the tunnel?
Yeah, there's actually an overflow.
I saw it. I was driving around town looking at properties.
Well, it don't come out the top, there's a pipe and it comes out right next.
Is it normal for there to be water flowing freely?
So we got that fixed. As for shut offs, there was eight this past month for non-payment, which is really good.
Compared to past, yes.
Compared to, I still think it's still.
Oh, yeah.
A problem. We did repair a water leak on Gretchen Street. And that was, let me think about this for a minute. Trying to think of where it was at.
Water leak?
It's in my house.
Oh, your house, that's right. Yeah, you didn't put the address on there, so, yeah, it ends up. She had a galvanized line that, thank goodness, she happened to hear it and we got it shut off.
I just go down in my basement and I just hear water like gushing and I'm like, what, why is something on upstairs? I run downstairs. I'm like, I don't know where it's at, so I realized it was outside. Then I took my mom somewhere and came back and then by then it's gushing through the basement.
So we just got it shut off. It was on freight and we fixed it, got it repaired, so.
Thank you for doing.
Hey, you're welcome. And then we did install where Jason Young is building a new house at church in Kissel. We got the, actually, water industry, the boys did, got the water and sewer stubbed in. So whenever he's ready, it's ready, so. And sewer wise, you know, typical wise trainer, and the, when I put down there number two, two inch. And what I just explained to Vince, we actually repurpose the water. This is water after it's went through the sewage plant, through the UV, and it's going out to the ditch. And then we actually pump it and use it to clean. The fine screen is just, that's just it, it's a screen that catches anything that, and trust me, people will flush. We've got a five yard dumpster, we'll fill it up every six months with anything from applicators to you, you just imagine. So then we repurpose the water to wash that. And, and I had to replace the strainer, which, no big deal, I ordered it and got it. Now, the exhaust fan in the blower room, and if you've ever been out there, the blower room, it blows oxygen into these big tanks, which are like sub-ty tanks. And it just gets so extremely hot. Well, you know, I told Jake, I said, man, there's a fan and it kind of looks like one of these that's above it. And it's not worked since I've been there. So Jake actually got up on the roof and the motor was bad. It actually is a big exhaust fan like you would probably see in a restaurant, but it's not serviceable from inside the building. I get up on the roof. And Tweety Electric, I think it was a hundred and forty bucks, got a new one and got it going, so it makes a huge difference, yeah. And then when they tore down that house there, where the liquor store, restaurants going or gas station, we got, found that and got that capped off. Jamie Murray did finish up on the Park Pavilion and that's just the caps. Every one of them, I was mowing grass the last windstorm, you know, that's about eight sided structure. So you have ridge caps going down where that comes, and every one of those ridge caps were just dissolved, they were blowing out into the yard, so. He actually got up there and they replaced just those, the roof itself was fine, but the ridge caps were destroyed, so. And they did do a lot of brush this, this month, and that's how many truckloads, they log those. Generators all got serviced. The Bobcat just got in for repairs, it actually sheared the belts and I don't know if it, it, it's twenty years old, so. It still is a good machine, but it just sheared them, so they're in there working on that, making sure it's not a bearing or something. Salt Dog, which we sent in last year at the end of the season. And I think if you look on there, the bill, I think it was like fifteen hundred bucks, which that's a lot cheaper than a new one. They put new, new bearings and new, new drive belt, even a throw out bearing on the motor itself.
How old was that thing?
Oh, my gosh, Tony went, got it, him and Omar, so it's, it's probably, it's probably seven years old. Got to remember, it throws salt and sand, so it takes a toll on it, but, yeah, it was, it was still working, but it was, it was struggling, so. But, you know, that's.
Me too.
Basically, in a nutshell, it's like a new one now. So what, I'm working with Ken, and if you got your, you got your fund report that she gave you? Which is, if you look on there, it'll, it'll have on here, it says, Fund Report eight-one to eight-thirty-one. It'll have general fund, motor vehicle highway, local roads and streets.
The first chunk is the monthly financials and then there's the funds.
But if you look on that, and this, this is my concern moving forward, a lot of things that are, you know, getting old. I mean, you got to remember, the system, water wise, it looks like this, Mike. Yeah, it's only two pages stapled together. I can't see it.
It says financials.
No, no. Yeah, one up there says. Yeah, it's just two pages. And if you look at it, and at the very top, it'll just say, like I say, in fund report, all funds. And it's general fund, motor vehicle highway, local roads and streets. Yeah, it's just stapled together and there's only two pages. Okay, so if you look at that, this is my concern moving forward. I know I've been working with Jenna, Jenna Lee, and we've found some things that just weren't installed properly. So, you know, as for maybe rates and, and what needs to be done. But if you, what I did is I circled, if you look down at the very bottom, it says water operating. Okay, very bottom of the page, and it says balance beginning of the year, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eight dollars. Okay, what I always really watch is if you move over to the right, and in the third column from the right, you say revenue month to date. Twenty-two thousand, one sixteen, which is probably one of the better months that we've had. But if you look to far right, that is current balance, and the current balance is only ninety-one thousand. So in other words, we've spent twenty-eight thousand dollars more than we brought in. So that just tells you, and, and just to kind of give you some ideas, and if you look at the next page, the sewer is kind of skewed, because we have so much money in sewer, sewer operating, that we used that for our matching parts of the slip line, the three quarters of a million dollars we got. So, you know, that started out three fifty-seven, now we're at two oh eight. So, I mean, we still have money, but my, my concern's moving forward. And one thing that just kind of sticks in my mind, and you got these copies that Melanie did for me, and you'll look on, it's Duke Energy. And one thing is, if you look at one page, at the top will say twenty-two forty-four. This is just the sewage plant.
It's a spreadsheet.
It's the spreadsheet with the highlighters, okay? If you look at twenty-two forty-four, and, you know, something that really sticks out, will get more recent down here in July. July of twenty-four was the bill, electric bill was two thousand, ninety-six bucks at sewage plant. This year, it's two thousand, five hundred and eight. So, you know, there's a, almost four hundred dollar, over four hundred dollar increase. And if you look at the next one, same thing, it's, it's over five hundred dollars. So, I mean, you, you got to run this utilities as a business. I know you guys don't want to hear about it, but all this stuff that are uncontrolled by us, just like electric bill. And this ain't counting the lift station, it's not counting anything, this is just the sewage plant, you know, not the barn. So, moving forward, that's the only reason I'm looking at, because of things that, even if we get grants, we still have come up with match. Now, the, the big thing is, we do, the only thing we can get another seven hundred thousand dollar grant, you got to wait, I think, three years or five. Three or five, so in other words, we can't do a sewer or stormwater, because those are relatively new, but we can do water. So even if we got seven hundred thousand, we still have to come up with a hundred and forty thousand as a match. I mean, they'll give you a seven hundred, and there's a lot of things that we need to do for that. So just moving forward, we just got to try to plan on, you know, things are going to break. I mean, it just does. Everything is, yeah, sewage plant was built in seventy-eight, now granted, you know, there's stuff that is replaced, but there's a lot that's not.
Didn't you tell us last month we were going to have to paint the towers?
Well, that's just something that's, they're gonna.
Regular maintenance.
That's not like this year, I mean, it's coming here in twenty-twenty-six.
Not necessarily, no. It's just they're gonna, I dim, they, they will come in, they'll say, okay, this thing's eleven years old, you got to paint it. You got to remember, they control, they hold all the cards. So when they come in and say, hey, you got to do this and this, then you have to do it. They don't care how you find the money to do it. Now, and I just know, being on the school board, we do, we're doing wraparound bonds. And I know that's something, if we do a big project, in other words, what we pay bond now, you actually get a bond to do your, let's just say you had to do a million dollars at the sewage plant. And what it is, is they'll give you the money, SRF will, and you can even try to get some grants, but they'll do you a bond, which is just a loan, it's just, they're smoke and mirrors. But it's called wraparound, in other words, you don't start paying on that until this other one's done. In which the sewer plant, I think, is done and.
The Bank of New York loans, yeah.
I think it's done twenty-nine. One of them, one of them is maybe five years.
Twenty-nine and like thirty.
Add together, it might be a little longer. Yeah. But, you know, I just want to make you guys aware, so whenever, you know, it's just something we got to, you know, we try to, it's not like we, you know, go out and spend money, so to speak. I mean, just because you got, and, you know, look at, and that's why I told her, I mean, looking at the general fund, general fund is okay, but, you know, you still have to be somewhat conservative. You know, the motor, now, is the, this is a question for you, so the money we've got to pay for this, is that money, where's that money?
To pay for what?
May street, all this project here.
What comes out of the grant that we received?
That, I just want to say, where, that money is not in MVH.
No.
Okay, because we've already.
It's just street only. It's in the state grant.
Okay. Well, there's no money in there, I thought you already got the money.
I do, but.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just curious.
I can find it in the computer, but.
Okay, that's fine. But, you know, I mean, if you look at those, I mean, they're all, they're all doing okay, but the biggest, the only revenue stream we have is water and sewer, but also it's the biggest.
Stormwater improvements, I just used the same account and changed the title.
Okay, that's fine.
So there's two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in there to finish the.
I mean, it's just sad that you can't take MVH and do something else with it, but you can't. If you look at MVH, it's got.
Alley's.
Well, yeah, right.
Roads.
That's local road and street, though. And this MVH, Gretchen?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah, just, just so you, you know, you know, I mean, you guys, some of you have been in government, you know, they dictate what you're going to do and there's, they want you to work on the streets, but, you know. Hopefully more things will, will come available with, but that's what this planning grant is going to tell us, kind of give us a good idea.
Ken working on it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Brad's right now doing, you know, I just talked with him, yeah. He's doing all of the locating so that we can have a comprehensive map. But it makes it, if all three of us die tomorrow, I wanted to have it where somebody can just log on, boom, there it is. There's a, there's a map of the sewers, there's a map of the water, you know, there's just a comprehensive map of everything. But I just want to make you aware of that, and, and I'm still working on it. I think, you know, trying to find, I know they were hoping that whatever company this is with the ordinances, because it's just a mess. You know, I don't understand why, hate to, you know, say anything bad, but it's like you get a new ordinance the other way, or put it in a box and get it out. But there's, I think, Jenna Lee found five different water ordinances. Some of them had oh-three, oh-eight, thirteen, twenty-three.
I just wish we had like a nice chunk of money laying around for someone to come in and clear out all of everything.
So, but I just, that's, that's kind of like one of the best things as for a measuring stick, you know, the electric bill is something that all of us have to have. And, you know, even the town, and you can just see, you know, it's went up percentage wise, probably the same as everybody else, but.
Probably more than everybody else.
Yeah, it's not like you do something.
Well, you got to remember, it's, it's a percentage, so, you know, your bill ten percent's not much, but on two thousand dollars, ten percent's a lot.
So really what we're looking at is down the road, will they rely on that, something?
Something that's got to be done, I, I just don't know, and I've been working with Ken and.
We know about it till the last minute on that too, when something really.
No, you just want to prepare for when stuff, and that's what I want to make you guys aware of. I want you to be prepared that if something, and it's nice, I mean, we did have enough money in sewer to do what we've done. And then in turn, I'm sure that will definitely, like right now, my lift station's not running hardly at all in comparison to what it did. So, I don't even know if the lift station's on here. It's probably a different.
Lift station's the sewage plant.
Oh, it's all together? There's two.
There's one bill. These here, the equipment barn, I split it up between the four different accounts, but, yeah, this is on the sewage plant. The pump. And then the water towers are here.
That's the wells, yeah.
Or water tower and the well.
I didn't know for sure how it was, but, you know, just, just by eliminating the incoming water. The, you got to remember, those lift station pumps are three phase, so, hey, those things don't have to run as much. And right now, when I get there early in the morning, especially if it's a weekend, I stop by, it might go an hour and not run at all. So that's great, yeah, because I could remember.
And what's, and why is that happening now, and why are we?
Just, I think, big thing is, yeah, the slip line, we just eliminate that water getting in. It's like a double edged sword, yeah, that's not working hard, but then it makes it harder to keep the sewage plant running, because when you go, you know, I'm having to run water. Just to keep UV cool, because it'll just basically shut down where there's no, you, you know, you instantly think, oh, my God, there's nothing flowing. Well, and when you look, it's five o'clock in the morning and just people running up on the weekends, very minimal, so. Trying to get Mike to leave his water running, but he won't. Okay. So anyway, I just.
Do you think probably end up having to raise water and sewer?
I think moving forward, yeah, either that, and it don't, it's not like you got to do a huge thing, but what some towns are starting to do, they just implement, you know, I know we have a base of nineteen-ten. So in other words, like water, I think it was nineteen-ten, then you paid six dollars and fifty-two cents per thousand. Well, you know, it, it's like when I sat on the council when we did a water project, and Brock and Associates come in and they said, hey, you need to have your rates here. And he was basing it on the water usage that, at the point, you know, what, at that point, what the town was using. Well, I told the council then, when, when they did that, I lived over here, I, first thing I did, I put in a water saver, you know, it's been eleven years ago. A water saver toilets, water saver water softener, and a washing machine. Well, I cut my water bill from, and I even had Kelly check it for me, I checked back, I went from five to six thousand a month to three thousand, I cut it in half. And it was the same amount of people, but, I know, I'll kill it there in a minute. But it's just a case of, you know, and all of our debts were based on that water usage, which is what do they have to go by, that's it. But all of us tried to be, you know, conservative, just, okay, like Ann, for example, I know we put her in a water softener, I did, that was a water saver. For the old one, it would just use fifty gallons every time it ran, this one uses eleven. Mike's got the same thing. Well, you know, then all of a sudden, this revenue stream that's going to be twenty-five thousand a month is twenty-two thousand now. It's not a case of, you know, we raised the rates, everybody got conservative. Now, some people don't care, they just, you know, the school and tank shop, things like that. But even the school, they, they, they have now sensors and push buttons, so, you know, and like you go in there and it's running all the time. So, you know, it's kind of like, you know, that car that is on electric, well, now how are they going to get the revenue from streets? Because they don't use gas, and that's what the biggest problem is. So you just have to be creative, and I think moving forward, we'll just, you know, with Ken's help and what other communities have done, it's, you know, we have a base, which I, I don't, I don't like what other towns have done, I hate to say any by name, but they raise it where you get, okay, it's twenty-five hundred gallons, it's going to cost you a hundred and ten a month. Okay, they do that, well, Ann, my mother, you know, you, Vince, you guys use probably a thousand to fifteen hundred, but they're making you pay for twenty-five hundred. In other words, you're paying the same as if Brian used twenty-five, I, I don't think that's fair. I like the flat fee and then so much per thousand. I think that's the fair way to be.
When's the last time we raised that? When you did that?
Water's been a long time.
So, I mean, we're due for.
Twenty-eleven?
Probably a two or three, or maybe even five dollars on the base. I mean, you figure five dollars isn't a lot, I mean, it can be, but not a lot if you add that to the initial base right now. And you still have, if they pay whatever.
Well, and, and I mean, right now, we have, we'll say, four hundred paying customers, so five bucks is two thousand bucks. You know, two thousand bucks would offset what we're paying for, you know, our electric bills that are went up. I mean, it's not, and I mean, you know, anybody asks you, it's like, you know, hey, you know, we use electricity and, and gas to heat the place and, and all that. So it's like, we've been efficient with it, but it's also a case where, you know.
Well, if we could, to me, if we could figure out when the last time was, because I'm sure it's been quite some time.
Yeah, it has.
I'm pretty sure it's eleven, twenty-eleven.
So, I mean, if you think about that, you ever up the base in fourteen years if it was eleven?
Yeah.
But everything else, like you said, has gone up, so.
Yeah, and, and it's just a case of with the projects that, I mean, I'd like to see us do, and it's all about money, you know, getting the grants, great, but you still got to come up with your match. But it's still, it's still just like, you know, one over a million dollars with a slip lining and cost us two hundred thousand or whatever it was, so. You know, it's still cheap to get accomplished what we did. And we still have that side of the highway that needs done.
I guess I'm curious as to whether five dollars would be enough, I mean.
Well, I think that if anything, if, if I was in your shoes, I would say I would probably do it in increments. You know, I would just hammer somebody for ten bucks. Say, all right, we're going to do five, set it up that every January first, it gives up a dollar. You know, just something that doesn't impact, you know, people, I mean, I understand.
Yeah, the only girl back in this town is, you know, we're a half population of retirees on fixed income, many of them just ended up with social security checks. I can remember when we were the last town to even make people have to pay for their trash pay.
Exactly.
And that wasn't much when it got in, but boy, you talk about the blow up, I can't even understand it, cuz it's like my social security isn't going up by eighteen dollars a month, you know, whatever it is.
That's why.
And it is, unfortunately.
No, it's not.
And like you said, that would be fifty, thirty, four hundred and some, two thousand dollars a month.
Yeah, yeah.
Every month.
That twenty four thousand would almost get it back to where we would be solving, it's still, but, you know, Jeff, Jeff can attest, Mike can't, you, you can operate, yeah, there's a surplus, but you can't keep operating on using the surplus. You have to replenish it. And I'd say if anything, if you did that and then set it up on it, I know a lot of towns do this, and that's why I was talking with Ken, where they might do the five dollars, but then they do a dollar a year on the base for five years, you know, then revisit.
Each and every time.
So they just do a gradual five year.
Every year after.
What about for the bigger water users, bigger meters?
Well, a- and when their base is gonna be more, only because like the school, their base was, I think, was four hundred and some dollars, so I think percentage wise, you just figure that out. And then we got the school, this is a four inch, and their water bill's three, four thousand dollars, so, and then with the, um, we have four two inch meters, or probably the next, the next biggest monthly is the tank shop, they use a boatload of water where they fill the L P tanks, you know, and then seasonal, but Helena, they'll use, there's months there in April, they'll use four hundred thousand gallons. So they'll use a boatload of water just to make up their chemicals, so. And then where Sheldon lives, the apartments, that's a two inch meter, and their bills, well, that was one of them we found, it's thirteen hundred bucks, where originally it was entered, coded wrong, they were only paying five hundred, it should've been thirteen hundred. You know, we got, got that remedy, so, you know, that's just the ones I can think of. I thought there was a fourth one, but, you know, yeah, those percentage wise, you just have to do the same. And that's something we could figure out, so I, you know, just, you guys, it's nothing that has to be done yesterday, hopefully we can get all this stuff.
Well, I mean, we've been talking about it for a while, cuz I think when I first came on, that was.
This here puts a little meat to the subject that you understand, it's not that, you know, hey, I wanna do money just cuz I wanna charge people, but these are real numbers, just on one thing, if you look at them, everything's on there. And they're all, you know, gradually going up. Yeah, definitely, and I mean, we, it's, it's a process you gotta go through, we gotta have a public hearing, you know, once you determine, so. But.
It's been a long time coming.
Yeah.
I know, it is.
Oh, you bitch.
He's over helping you. Okay.
There we go, it's kinda going to get up now.
Oh, no, he's.
So that, and I just wanted to let you guys know, moving forward, so it's something to think about, and we can put it on there and discuss it and, you know, I'll get with Ken and we'll get more hard, and, and, and I'm trying to find the actual most up to date ordinance, and like I said, I called Jim Knight, he sent me like the benefit package in our pay, but he didn't, he's gonna look, he thinks it's an older folder, I told her it was, but I don't know when. So that's all I got.
That's enough. Yeah, it's definitely something we gotta, just probably we need to start looking into this and going detail and.
Well, isn't that part of the planning, utility planning might help too?
Well, he's just gonna really give us an idea of, hey, you need to do this, this and this, and this one's gonna cost. I just know right now we're capable of getting up to seven hundred thousand dollars for water, cuz we've not done anything on water since twenty eleven or twelve.
One, you also said to us that a lot of times they won't even give you a grant unless your utilities are at a certain.
Yeah, and, and figuring right now.
Be in the future anyway.
It's like our, for four thousand gallons is our baseline, and I think at four thousand gallons, we were at forty five something for water and fifty five for sewer. Which would, yeah.
Don't you think we should increase for usage and not for people that are conservative?
For usage?
So, the more they use, the more they pay. Not just the base going up.
Well, and, and I understand that, but to get, like my mother, I'm using her as an example, she uses twenty thousand, fifty hundred gallons. We charge six fifty two, so what you wanna do, charge eleven dollars for a thousand? To do that, then your bill's gonna go up, and you use six thousand, yours is gonna go up substantially compared to hers, see what I'm saying?
Well, I'm using the water.
Yeah, well, that's something for you guys to really think about, I mean, you know, once, I'll try to get, once we get it, we'll try to get it to you where our current ordinance is. I know Ken just says if you do on the baseline that way, everybody pays it instead of penalizing Mike or the school or the tank shop, you're big water users, you, you make it more broad, so. You know, I don't know, that's, that's your.
Well, we gotta get up to a level where we're at least even.
Yes, yeah.
If not, you know, losing like this does not.
Yeah, and, and I mean, you know, it's just some old infrastructure, we've done some great strides, but it's still.
Are we gonna schedule a public hearing, meeting?
Well, you have to get a plan before you can have that.
I think we're discussing the plan now.
Well, we don't have, no, but that's where we're.
Yeah, we just have to get it together and get, get.
When are we gonna get it together, Rick?
Well, I'm trying to find out.
By the first of the year?
Yeah, I'd say easily by then. I mean, it's just trying to figure out if everything is entered into computer correctly, that's my biggest concern.
Okay, table that sucker then.
Yeah, well, it wasn't on the agenda, that was just me bringing it up.
Bringing it up.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll try to keep on the next agenda and see where we're at. Cuz if we can get the actual heart on it, that way you guys can go home and you can look at it. You know, nobody says you gotta do a knee jerk reaction in thirty minutes, you can look at it, think about it, you know, take it to church, pray about it, whatever, you know.
Ask all your neighbors what they think.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, of course, nobody's gonna want an increase.
Yeah, I know what they think already.
I mean.
Well, I mean, you could just say.
What you do like Minnesota does, they just literally shut the water down between these hours. I mean, you'd be showered, water shuts off, my sister, oh yeah, by the way, we have a mandatory shutdown between like five P M and eight P M.
Why?
Uh, to conserve water and.
How about from like nine to two?
Some day on water, or Ponza, like, and that's the state of.
Minnesota's probably the most conservative water state you ever want, because they, cuz their money comes from tourism, so.
They use a lot.
There, you can't touch the weeds on this site, you can't, it's Minnesota, man, if you. All about it, it's.
I don't.
But yeah, they just literally shut it down, uh, they just shut, that's a high peak usage and they just shut it down.
I'd be in a pickle.
People know it and they accept it.
Yeah.
Increase, for instance, uh, people that use more water get charged more for sewage too, right?
Yes, well, it's not they get charged more, it's the same rate, it's just if you're, let's just say you're the school, you're paying the same per thousand as Mike is, it says he uses five thousand, they use forty thousand. So the rate's the same, it's just our bill's more, it doesn't increase as you use more or go less.
So, so the, the rate per gallon.
Stays the same.
For both sewer and water?
Yes, yes.
It's a combo.
Yes, yeah. See, the sewer is charged off the water, the only thing it's meter is the water. Okay, so and if you use, now, okay, for example, um, the guy that bought your place, he started getting his bushes and running water, well, he never realized, he just was paying the bill, I said, well, you know, we're not gonna charge you the sewer cuz we could tell, I mean, she could tell that the water would run from, when it was real hot and dry from, yeah, eight o'clock till four o'clock, he'd leave it on for his bushes. Well, you know, that wouldn't go down the sewer, so we don't have to process it, so we credit him for that.
And would you do the same thing for the, the fertilizer company, cuz that's not.
Yeah, we have, that's water only, that, that meter's water only, the two inch meter just goes, it don't go to a toilet or anything, only thing it does a toilet is the office, so the fertilizer is strictly just water.
They have like three, three bills for.
Yeah, well, and then the school has like one meter for the pool in which the pool, we don't charge them for two, because it goes there, then they pump it to the ditch if they're pumping it out, so, yeah.
How much does fifty gallons of water cost?
Fifty gallons? Is my, is my well running? You gotta remember, the drawdown, my well or the water tower is set where it comes on at fourteen feet and it don't shut off till twenty two. So there's times, you gotta remember, that's a hundred and fifty thousand gallons, so that's pumping right at a hundred thousand gallons, so there's times, you know, it don't run at all, just because, you know, there's a, just like a pressure tank, there's just plenty of pressure there just reserved, but to calculate what it is, I mean, it's pretty hard to really calculate fifty gallons, I mean, I know right now, a thousand gallons only costs you six dollars and fifty seven cents and what it costs us to make it, I don't know, I don't even know how you come about it.
How deep is our wells?
One of them, this one over here is two hundred and, I wanna say it's two hundred and fifty foot in a water table. The static level is twenty nine feet, this one's like a hundred and have to look fifty foot in a static level, theirs only like twelve feet. So, in other words, static level is where it stays, so. I mean, they're great shape, I mean, we just had them serviced and they, they haven't changed at all in fifty years, stays pretty constant. Might drop a foot one year, but then be back. I mean, we're in excess, well, not excessive, but in a real dry season, it's still not really a problem. So. And they're all running well, so that's not, not going, they're doing fine. I just know that when we did a water project, we were pumping ten million gallons a month. And now we pump between one point five and two, so that's how much leakage we had in the system that got updated. So, that just lets you know that there was a lot of leaks that, you know, might be leaking right to the broken sewer that's over here, you know what I mean? Never come to the surface, it'd just be shooting water right down the drain. So as we, as we fix things, it's, it is getting a lot more efficient. Which is good.
And we've just worked on this portion so far?
No, from the highway this way.
Okay.
So everything Dollar General all the way down here to the pizza to.
And that was storm sewer?
That was just, that was just the sewer, sanitary sewer.
I thought the storm was.
Storm was just to fix flooding over on corner street, so.
Okay.
But, you know, it's, it's, it's doing what we want it to do really well, so. That's a good, it's money well spent, I mean, it is, but also moving forward, you know, that was put in in nineteen eighty, so. Yeah, forty five years old, so.
That's the thing, when you fix something, that brings up the other problems that you ignored, but alrighty.
Okay.
Okay, well, we know something that we gotta be looking at seriously and getting to, so.
Yep.
Alright, I may I'll let you on your little.
Um, I mostly just wanted to remind you guys about the adoption meeting at the next meeting uh, for our budget, and then we will also be opening trash bins. They're supposed to have them all turned in before four P M the day of the meeting. So, hopefully we'll have packets. I haven't really heard from anybody, so fingers crossed. Um, financials this month, I mean, it wasn't, wasn't too crazy. Just got a, several payrolls and some consumer deposits and lots of community center refunds.
Anybody got any questions on that? And the motion to approve?
Second.
All on paper, please say aye.
Alright.
So passed, thank you very much. Okay. Well, you did go with the old business or with the old deal, but the adoption next month, the fire department.
Okay. So, this one had me a little confused, uh, I gave you guys a fire contract, um, so our fire contract from last year, we paid, we were asked to pay fifteen, four fifty um, for the year, so I paid that back in like March, maybe. Um, Blake is the secretary for the fire department, he came in like after the last meeting uh, with the new contract for next year, and he said it was only a two point five increase, two, two point five percent increase, but when I looked at the price, it's like a, what do we come up with a five percent increase? So, I, I wasn't really sure. Um, cuz I didn't budget for it. I mean, in our doc, or our, our budget stuff, I just figured up the fifteen, I mean, we would be able to make do, but that's a, like almost eight hundred dollars.
Where, where does it go to five?
I don't know. Cuz Blake said at their last meeting, he, he was told to do this, this amount, and he thought it was just.
So, it was fifteen something, it's now what, sixteen?
Yeah, it was fifteen, four forty. And now they're wanting us to pay sixteen.
Well, I ask them why, because that's not in the contract and it's not due, right, that's why I don't got it.
Well, I, and I would agree with you, I told her how I would look at it if I was in her shoes is, okay, we'll put that on our budget for next year, but our budget's already set, we don't have the option, so, you know, if you don't like it, then.
I don't remember that being in the contract that it was gonna be an increase like that.
It doesn't specify.
The one guy I knew, his idea was, they were talking originally about two percent.
Yeah.
But then.
It doesn't matter if it's five or ten, you know, when you budget, what you budget, that's it.
You gotta, gotta get with us before June or July.
And I think if anything, have her make up a letter, Vince can sign it, says, if you're wanting, you know, even proposed, Ben, this is, you know, our budget.
Far bigger jump than.
Yeah, you have to do it January one or whatever, give them a deadline, if you start your budgeting in June.
Um, June, April is when I met with her.
Okay, just say you need to propose this to us by February first.
Does the lawyer know?
I, I talked with her, she said, just run it through the council, let them know what your concerns are and then move from there.
Yeah.
But she didn't seem to be had a problem with it either way, she's like, if you guys can't do it, then just let them know that that's not feasible for you at this time.
I'd like to see what it said in my contract, I don't, yeah, I guess if it's not, like, we're gonna raise it five percent on here.
No.
If it's not in the contract, then it's not due, I don't, that's why I would.
I don't, I don't remember seeing anything like that.
Well, it sounds like they just changed.
Yeah, just like our.
They were trying to make up for, um, since the payment got missed for a few years during sickness and.
No, we had it written that that money was gone, it was gone, they were never gonna get it back, you can't just slowly creep on us and try to get it back.
The only thing I can figure is why it increased so much, but.
I'm sure their electric bill went up too.
I'll talk to.
I mean, seriously, I'll joke in the song.
Yeah.
But I would definitely.
Come and talk to us about it.
I would definitely put it in a format of a motion, just, just so.
The renovation out there for the animals.
Probably the county.
County.
Well, cuz they tried to put it in the fire department, but I don't think they had enough layout to do that.
No, what I did is, I know maybe the fire department had something to do with it, now they're trying to get their money back.
Do we need a motion to?
I'd say what I would do, then that way you.
I'll make a motion to table the fire department.
Well, we need to make a motion, uh, table and to, uh, send a letter to them that our budget is done.
They need to come talk to us and explain.
Present before we start our next budget next year, June.
What to deny contract presented?
What do you think, Jeff? You're just listening.
We are not.
February, February first?
Yeah, February first, what I would suggest, but that's just me.
They need to.
They need to get it to us, and it, because, just because we proposed X amount of dollars, doesn't mean we're gonna.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Definitely have decided our budget is set already and not be adjusted.
Yeah, there you go.
Especially people coming before the board and saying, hey, look, we need more money because. I, I think that was just kinda crappy to just put it on piece of paper, go here, Jeff.
Last month, or near the first last month, Colorado town, they had that on A B C News. Had to do with the fire department, I don't want the finances, but the town said no, fire department packed up and moved.
They got a fairly hot new rebuilding with the area.
I got a question about streetlights, did Duke pick their streetlights, do you have a list of streetlights that are out?
No, usually people just. No, when people come in and tell us there's a street light out, I try to get as much.
There is, I'll get these really dark, if I drive by, why is it so dark?
Well, before you leave, I'll get your address, uh, because basically I go to the Duke's website.
Okay.
Click our location, click on the, that's, I usually have to get details, and then I can click on the poll. At the location you tell me, and then I can put the lights out.
See, I'm the only one that's probably affected by it, my house is the only house.
Straight by the curb?
It's right on the curb. And it, that curb is dark. Flying around that curb at night, it's like, it is dark on that corner, it, so it must just went out. Because I come home the other night, I'm fumbling around.
You can, you could turn that in on their website.
I do.
Just give them.
I didn't know if we had a list here or not.
You're their customer.
Usually they come out, not just the one light, they usually won't come out.
They sub it out.
They don't do it anyway, they'll send a guy up. My neighbor just did it. It's like if they take out an old pole, they subcontract to a company to do that, just get from the list, like they finally. An old pole by our, by the, uh, the Legion and the Cabbie Union for a year and a half, and one day here comes some company about five trucks.
They tell us that they are on, so.
Okay, so, motion to not accept contract presented, need an increase in funds before February of year. We'll type up a letter to Walton Volunteer Community Fire and make them aware.
Just tell them your budget's.
Budget is locked in and not can't adjust for that.
Can't adjust, adjusted this late.
It's already locked in.
You have to do it in February. That's not submitted, in writing.
Okay. Now who motioned?
I do.
Brian. And seconded?
Nobody.
I'll second.
And, there you go.
It's you, you have to ask, all in favor?
We did, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we'll do it again.
Hi, hi.
I, all in favor, hi, hold on.
You're a favorite, Mike.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh no, I got some things to bring up. Alright, anybody got anything they wish to present or anything, thank, okay, need a motion to adjourn, please. Second. Good try.
Are you getting a check, is that why?
Normally Mike's ready to pay bills.
Oh, he was.
Yeah, and what I did, is I left that with no connection. I ran all the way until there's no connection. So I just did all the way in, put a new bound for the other one.
Yeah, I noticed that, so I thought, well, I just wanna make sure that, like, that's.
No, it's okay.